Town and Mount Airy Planning Commission Meeting. It is June 30, 2025, 7:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get settled into our agenda, as I always do, I thank those that have taken the time in their evening to come out and join us, especially on a hot evening in the end of June, and also for those that don't make it but they're tuning in on the live stream for tonight's session. Again, thank you for being involved in your town business. The next order of business we have is the review and approval of the last meeting minutes of May 19th. So I ask the commissioners, the minutes are before you. And before I take a motion, I have to commend Ms. Deb Clinton on the town staff for capturing so well the rather complex discussion that we had at our last meeting in May with regard to the elevation and the redesign of the exterior materials for the buildings in Southside Plaza Arena or area. And so I knew that was a tough back and forth with amendments and motions, and so very well done, Deb. And so with that, I will take a motion a second. We'll have some discussion or changes if there are any that a commissioner wishes to make. So at this point, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll so move.
Commissioner Butts makes the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Bieda makes the second. Is there any discussion, amendments, changes? Once again, does any commissioner see a need for an edit for these minutes? Seeing or hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of May 19th, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The minutes are...
Would I abstain from that since I wasn't here?
Yes, you would.
Okay, abstain.
Yep. We have one abstention. I'll leave it at that. The minutes are approved with one abstention. Thank you. And I'll sign those, Deborah, at the end as we always do. The next agenda item, as we always do, is we open the floor for a limited period of time to any in the public who are here today who wish to make a public comment. We always try to caution that it would be a comment or a topic related to something outside the agenda and topics on the agenda, because I will strive to allow time at that specific agenda topic for any relevant public comment as needed. So again, is there any interest in the audience tonight for a public comment? Please show me your hands if you do. Once again, is there any need for a public comment? Seeing no need for public comment, I close the public comments section of tonight's agenda and move right into the Carroll and Frederick County Planner Reports. The Carroll County Planner is still an absent position from Westminster. The town staff is working diligently to get it filled for obvious reasons. We really, really value the coordination we have with Westminster and the county level with all things within the town, particularly with regard to planning. However, John has secured, I believe, a brief report that he provided on your seat tonight, and I believe this is probably first read tonight for all of you. So as a courtesy, I'll just pause while commissioners glance through it, and if there is any topic in here that you wish to mention, raise a question or whatever, John, is it fair that we will raise that question back through you?
Yeah, if there's any questions or comment. And what I can do also is email this out to you guys tomorrow, because it does have a link to their Carroll County Master Plan, if you notice in the third or fourth paragraph. And I will say that I know right now that they have soon to have two or three open positions up there, so I don't see us getting a liaison from Carroll County anytime soon.
And a bit of detail on that, this is an advertised position.
Correct.
Okay, so they are not going to take a legacy staff member at the county level and fill them in as an additional duty or something?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, okay. All right. So with the brief time that I've given the commissioners to look it over, do we have any questions to be raised for John to pursue? Again, he is going to provide this email to us, and John, I think it's fair that if they do review it at their leisure at home, if they have questions, they'll just shoot them back to you.
Sure, that's fine.
Fantastic. And when you shoot those back to John, if I may just again caution you, Opens Meetings Act, don't include any other commissioners on that. We don't want your very reasonable question or your very reasonable comment to constitute an Open Meeting Act violation by including a quorum of the commissioners here, okay? So just shoot it back directly to him, and he'll log it in and pursue it as appropriate. Thank you, John.
And I would make sure that possibly CCing you, Ralph, just so you're aware of everybody's position as well.
That's fair. Thank you. Okay. And so with that, I do see Ms. Moreno from Frederick County here. Vanessa, how are you tonight? Please come.
Thank you. Long time no see. All righty. Hello, hello? Okay.
Just pulled a little closer to you, if you can.
All righty. There we go. All righty. So I don't have too many updates, but just a couple of items to note. I know there has been a lot of discussion around the data center development in the county, and so just wanted to give a little update on that. So the county council, as many of you may know, introduced legislation to establish an overlay district that will limit data center development in Frederick County, and this is specifically to the East Alco site over by Adamstown, and would be around 1,000 acres. Let's see. So the planning commission will be reviewing the proposed map at the July 9th Planning Commission meeting, and there will be subsequent meetings on the 16th and 23rd to allow for additional public comment. And then once the planning commission has given their recommendation, it will go for a 60-day review to the state level, and then the county council will also have an additional period to review the planning commission's recommendation and adopt the legislation. As of now, there are no rezonings proposed at this time. I know a lot of people have been concerned about that, and as well as there has been a moratorium on new data center development as of now, put in place by county executive Jessica Fitzwater. And lastly, there are some new data center performance standards that were established earlier this month, and I believe further standards will be included in this next legislation. So just a quick little update on that. And then lastly, as part of the Investing in Workers and Workplaces Plan, staff presented, well, staff had a workshop with the Planning Commission on June 18th, and during that workshop, there was some talk around some rezonings in the New Market area. It's a handful of parcels that would be rezoned from general commercial and ORI, which is Office Research Institutional, to light industrial to better support businesses locating near the major interstates and help to encourage job diversity. These zoning changes have not been finalized, and we'll return to the Planning Commission in early July for another workshop on that. And those are my updates. I'd be happy to take any questions as well.
Absolutely. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding Frederick County, Frederick City, New Market?
Can I ask one, Ralph?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So what was the zoning going from what to what? Because I didn't...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It was general commercial and ORI.
Two.
To light industrial, just help better support more flexible uses to businesses trying to relocate to the area.
Does light industrial allow a residential component?
It does not.
Vanessa, with regard to the overlay, and my knowledge of overlays could add more restrictions onto any development. So when the overlay is applied to the possible data center build, is that data center in its current state going to be grandfathered, or will the final legislation in the overlay now impose additional current restrictions on the development of the data center?
Oh, that's a great question. So the developer and applicants who have already submitted their plans for the quantum loophole project, those plans are already working their way through development review, so they are technically grandfathered in, but it would just limit any additional applicants who would like to apply within that area or outside the area.
And this is the data center that's linked to the power line reliability effort, or no?
No, I believe those are two separate projects, and I know that project is definitely making its way through Carroll County and Frederick Counties as well, and a lot of updates on that front.
No linkage.
But no relation.
Gotcha. Okay. And on Cherry Hill?
Cherry Run, yeah.
Cherry Run, thank you. Any, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we're talking over 1,000 dwelling units, correct?
That is correct, and I believe it was approved back in May, but I know I missed that meeting since I was out of town. But yes, that project has been approved. It did not see as much public feedback as we anticipated. I know it did have a lot, it was a bit contentious at times, but when we brought it, when staff brought it to the Planning Commission back in May, it seemed to go by pretty quickly, so...
Well, you've been wonderful in keeping us linked to that, because that is just our neighbor, just to the west.
Absolutely, yeah.
A short distance. And I think you've also informed us that the size of that, well, I think it was exactly 1,010 dwelling units in your pipeline chart, if I'm not mistaken. There's going to be a new elementary school built to accommodate that growth, right? And so, if I may, could I possibly ask that, could you go back to Frederick City and County Department of Planning and ask if there are any, from here on, any traffic studies, water studies, all those things that are necessary for development of that size?
Absolutely, yeah.
And my question is driven more so by that 1,010 dwelling unit, you know...
Right.
...size, and out of concern of us being right next to them. So if that's a reasonable question, that we be maybe tightly bound to whatever studies you have in bringing that development on through its stages, and John, I didn't coordinate with you before asking this, if that could be done, would it be reasonable, will that link come through you?
Vanessa can send it to me and Deborah, and send it off to you guys.
Yeah, and I say that in all respect to your offices and also for, like Barney, because if there are studies related to water, wastewater treatment, et cetera, that's probably something that you would want to be keen on also, if that's reasonable. Great, so...
Absolutely, yeah, I'd be happy to. I could definitely reach out to our development review planners who are more in charge of like the site plan approval process and, you know, constant communication with the developer applicant and so forth, so I'd be happy to reach out to them.
And just in short, just keep us in the loop on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you don't mind. Commissioner Butts?
There's another reason that we ask this, and we've been asking it of the Frederick County planning staff, gosh, as far as I'm aware, the last 10, 12, 14 years, because the growth that y'all are engendering on that side of Mount Airy has a tremendous impact on us in one way or another. And it puts a lot of potential pressure from the west on Mount Airy and our functioning here. So the extent to which you can give us advance notice.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, when there's going to be more development and so forth, we can prepare for it. We can look at it. We can have Barney and others take a close look at what the impact of that may be.
I'm on it. I've got my eyes peeled on those projects coming through the pipeline for you guys.
We appreciate it.
I try my best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, and I'm going to lead off by saying, I guess it's sign night here for the Planning Commission. Not entirely, but a great deal of tonight's agenda has to deal with signage being applied for. And so while the commission gets settled in on the first agenda item regarding the hair cuttery, I will ask for a representative for that applicant, if he may come forward and get settled in. And before I then pitch to John to give us the staff report, I'll just give a quick overview. The code by which we will decide upon all sign applications is found within the codebook of 112-11, and within that chapter of the codebook, this is a commercial property, so specifically 112-11, paragraph F, foxtrot, is the guidelines by which we will examine this application. I believe that this is a two-sign application, if I'm not mistaken. And John, if you go ahead and give us the details on it.
Again, real quick, the haircuttery's been in the town of Mount Airy at this location for over three decades, and they're going through a rebranding of themselves. If you look, the haircuttery sign itself hasn't really changed very much at all, except for increasing the circular trademark sign of HC. So again, you know, looking at the building, this is the front elevation, the next one would be the side elevation, whoop, that's not what I want, which are the two signs they're coming in for. Again, the side storefront basically is, they have 80 feet for the side entrance or the side of the building for their storefront, and 30 feet for the front. If you look at the application itself, the both signs are in compliance with the square footage for both of the frontage, the front and the side. The front comes in at 29, should be 29.33 square feet, and the side comes in at 29.38 square feet. So again, these are both in compliance with our 112-11 sign ordinance. Again, the application, you can see, has the different sizes for the two different signs, and again, their complete application along with their affidavit, and then again, their sign design and fabrication layout.
Gotcha. So sir, thank you for joining us tonight. If I could just ask you to state your name and where you, what role you have reference to this application?
Sure, thanks for having me. Gary Brent with MG Permits. I'm the permit expediter, representing this client, Beltway Signs, the installer essentially who is contracted by Haircuttery and their national sign company to replace the signs.
Gotcha. And if there's anything that you deem important to note that wasn't mentioned in the staff report, here's your opportunity to elaborate or expand upon any aspect of the application.
No, I see the clocks, I started, but no, I think John did a great job. Nothing to add. If you have any questions, they're certainly pleased.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brent. So at this point, I then ask for the commissioners' interest or questions regarding this application? Any particular topics? So the side where the sign is on the next one is referred to by the code as secondary frontage. It is also included in the calculation, I believe, John, even though there's no entrance there. Whenever we have a corner commercial building, the side sign is referred to as secondary frontage. So just using some terms there. Any questions again? No interest? Okay. By the code, in 112-11, paragraph O, Oscar, we are given the commission three criteria to evaluate the location and design of proposed signage. Safety, including sightlines for motor vehicles, I do not see any issue with regard to sightline for motor vehicles for the application. Secondly, whether a proposed sign unduly impairs the visibility of lawful signs on neighboring properties, I don't see any issue there. And lastly, whether the proposed location and design are aesthetically and architecturally consistent with neighboring properties, the historic area, if applicable, not applicable here, the zoning district in which it is to be located, the architecture of the improvements located or proposed to be located on the property in the town's design guidelines. Again, on the third criteria for evaluation, I don't see any issue or problems.
I will state that there is currently these two signs in place currently, and I didn't get yours uploaded, because I didn't have time this afternoon.
No problem.
I apologize. But basically, there are two existing signs currently. We're just, they're updating their current logo to support their new business.
And to that point, thank you, John. To that point, is just the circular new logo HC being added, or is the entire sign being rebuilt?
The entire sign is being replaced, but it's a new branding, like John mentioned. We're doing a slew of these all over the region, and they're just basically, so the lettering actually got smaller with the proposed new signs versus what's existing, because by adding the logo, it increased the overall sign area, causing the letters to have to get somewhat smaller. The sign area, though, still within the code, like John mentioned, on the front end, on the secondary, on the side entrance, or the side elevation, the signs are slightly smaller overall height, basically, is the bottom line.
I got you. Little tighter.
Yeah, because of the logo was added. They had to reduce and had to shrink the sign somewhat to get it all in there.
And I will say, the application, when it first came in, didn't meet the guidelines, so I had to reach back out to the sign or to the permit expediter, and we did some finagling, and we were able to get it down.
Well done.
So it met their requirements.
Last call for commissioner questions or issues. If not, then I will make a motion to approve the Haircuttery Signs, plural, application submitted by the Beltway Sign Service Incorporated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hatley. Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion made to approve the signs submitted by Beltway Sign Service Incorporated for the Haircuttery, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the sign application for the Haircuttery is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just hang tight. The next sign application we have is for the business known as the Mattress Warehouse to be located or is located at 325 East Ridgeville Boulevard in Mount Airy. Again, the applicant, Beltway Sign Service, and fair to say, Gary Brent, you're also representing that applicant?
Yes, sir. Gary Brent here, representing Mattress Warehouse.
Fantastic. And as I did before, I won't go over, but we'll apply the code 112-11 in the examination of this commercial business application. John, staff report?
Sure. Again, the applicant came in, there was some communication with them from the first presentation of the application we had to work through, excuse me. But I did want to bring up this diagram first. We have S1, S2, and S3. S1 is the monument sign, which is a secondary sign to what Ralph was saying earlier. S3 is the one that's on the front of the building, and S2 is, let me make sure that's the right way.
You're right.
Yeah, S2 is the one that's up underneath the covered walkway, which is also a secondary sign. This red label is two-sided, it'll be on both sides of the monument sign, and is dictated, the size is kind of dictated by the monument sign that was approved by the planning commission at that point in time. S2 is, again, the one that's underneath of the covered walkway, which is also a secondary sign, which doesn't go into calculations. The staff report is incorrect on what it's asking for a variance, because that won't be necessary. I was hoping to have remodified the staff report prior to today's meeting. I did not have enough time to do so. So again, the front of the building is currently, it's the mattress firm's current location that was bought out by then Mattress Warehouse. And again, the overall length of their building is 74 and a half linear feet, which gives them the ability to have 74 square feet of signage. And their total square footage for the large fascia sign is 62 square feet. And basically, the recommendation is not the need for a verification or a variation of four square feet because of the two secondary signs.
The hanging down sign?
Correct. And the monument sign are not calculated into this. So there's no need for any variation to the sign ordinance or the recommendation.
And Mr. Brent, again to you, is there anything you'd like to emphasize or bring out that wasn't captured in the staff report?
No, John did a great job, as always, but, I mean, we did work with John, or he worked with us, sorry, to reduce the signs to the level where they were allowed one-to-one. We came in with a sign on the front, the wall sign, larger than what would be allowed, so we're simply refacing the monument sign there. Like John mentioned, you can't, that size is dictated by the existing sign. It's just a panel being slid in and slid out. And the blade sign underneath, or the under, I guess, the pedestrian sign, that is just vinyl, they're applying vinyl to the existing blank panel, so there's nothing there other than adding what's existing. So that's all.
Okay. So commissioners, if I can just recap accurately, this application, so there's three signs. There's an off-premises or monument sign, as we refer to it here, at the entrance to that shopping area. There's a sign that's large and on the building facade, and then there's a smaller sign that's in the covered walkway that hangs down from the ceiling as per other businesses along that covered walkway. And I believe we understand that the property owner, of course, has reviewed that hanging down sign and has agreed to it.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So that is already cleared through the landlord of that shopping center, so to speak. So with that, are there any questions from the commissioners regarding those three signs? The property management company was the only question I had. I will open to anyone in the public that has a question about this. I know this is a very high-traffic area. Is there any interest in the public for a comment regarding this sign application? Seeing none, no public comment, and no further commissioner discussion, I will again make the motion to approve the Mattress Warehouse sign application for an off-premises sign, a sign on the ceiling of the covered walkway in front of the business, and a building facade sign as submitted by Beltway Sign Service Incorporated. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Commissioner Binack seconds it. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the motion or the application? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve these three signs, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The sign application for the Mattress Warehouse three signs is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Our third sign application is an AT&amp;T business sign application. Again, the applicant is represented by Beltway Sign Service, and again, we'll apply the code 112-11, paragraph C for commercial signs. Staff report, John, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you. Again, this one's a little similar to the last one. The variation of one square foot won't be required, because we have some secondary signs as part of this. Currently, this is the size of the front of the building. They have 20-foot, 6-inch linear footage, frontage of the building, and the request was for a total sign area of 19.1 square feet. So that's in compliance with the sign ordinance. Again, the secondary sign is again up underneath of the, no, that's not it, up underneath the mansard or covered walkway, as well as two-sided, similar, probably attaching a vinyl coating to that as well. And then the other signage that is really, of course, you know, it's not, what's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, the advertising of the store hours on the front of the building, my delicate touch on the mouse. We normally don't even take this into account. Normally, we don't even see this as part of an application. Normally, we don't even see this as part of an application, but AT&amp;T did provide the labeling on the door as well.
Correct.
But, and so planning, the staffs are recommending, planning, planning commission grant the approval of all replacement signs requested by the applicant.
Gotcha. And again, Mr. Brandt, anything you wish to add or elaborate upon, on this sign application?
No, sir. John did a great job. Again, as he mentioned, the vinyl on the, on the pedestrian, that under canopy sign is just vinyl applied to the existing blank face.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this application? Okay. In the staff report, John, there was also mention of vinyl lettering on the door of the business.
Mm-hmm.
Is that included in this application? Or is it strictly the sign on the facade and the hanging down covered walkway sign?
Well, again, it is, it isn't, it doesn't go into the calculation. It is part of the sign application, but it isn't considered part of, the store hours is not normally something we would put into that calculation. It would just be the main sign on the fascia of the building.
Gotcha. And commissioners, please, I apologize for leaping ahead of giving you an opportunity on questions, but in the code, the commission can delegate to the zoning administrator yourself for, of course, the sign permitting and approval in some circumstances. So I'm focused in, in leading off with that statement, John, I'm focused on something as simple as a business wanting to put vinyl lettering, stick-on lettering on a door that says, "We're open these days and hours," or "This is our logo," or "This is our phone number." You, you know what I'm speaking of?
Yes.
I'm not speaking so much as to a building sign or a, or not even the smaller hanging down covered walkway sign. And so commissioners, I, I would just open the thought that when it comes to businesses asking to put vinyl lettering on their entrance doors, is, is that something appropriate? We let the zoning administrator work with the business on something of that level? I do, it is in the code that whenever the zoning administrator questions whether it's appropriate for the commission or not to rule on a sign, he will just bring it to us. But in this case, I think we can just, because you'll, you will next issue a permit for the sign.
That's correct.
And so I think, just my opinion, but I'm open to it from the other commissioners, for something as simple as door vinyl stick-on hours of operation, I think you can work that yourself at the permitting stage.
Well, how about then even the, the marquee at the end of the road, you want to see that as well? Because it's not included in the calculation that we, you know, the two-sided marquee or even the one that's underneath the mansard or the, the covered walkway. Do you want to still see those as well?
Yes.
So, so the two-sided marquee, that's the thing hanging from the covered walkway, right?
Well, I'm saying, the monument sign marquee or the marquee.
Oh, no, that's an off-premises sign that should come before the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so off-premises signs are described as part of the planning commission review. So I would say, yeah, keep that coming. But something as simple as putting vinyl lettering on a door.
Right.
I think you work that out at the permitting process.
Yep.
But I'm, I'm trying to draw a line here between significant enough for the commission to review and give you feedback.
Sure.
And, and lesser significance, so to speak. And again, I, you know, this is a case-by-case basis, I think, but in, in an example like this, and I'm not ruling out that all doors with lettering from here on don't come before us. I'm just saying, in a case like this, I'll just leave, I would say, figuring out that lettering and what it says is okay for you to work at your level.
Okay.
On an entrance door. Unless, again, the commissioner sees that as an issue.
I, I kind of would like to see it, just to make sure that it's standard, like, we're not seeing any crazy colors or anything like that.
Fair.
I think that font size and all that stuff matters, too. So I personally would like to see it.
And, and, and I'm trying to give everybody both sides of this kind of issue here because we have had businesses that have placed adhesive decorations on the windows facing the public and have judged those adhesive stick-on illustrations as unnecessary for planning commission review, whereas from the town's perspective and from my personal perspective, they were significant window illustrations. And so I'm trying to be even-handed here without naming the business. So there is a point where you have to be cautious about deferring too much of window adhesive signs to something outside of the planning commission review. And I'm, I'm keen to that.
Yeah, Mr. Ch, I was, I was going to say with that, too, like, my concern is if it's something that obstructs the whole door or.
Sure.
If it's too much decal that you can't see in the door.
Safety.
Or, so it's, you know, it's a safety issue. Or if it's starting to advertise certain products or something like that in the, we just, it's better to have a look at it, I think. Like, that one's very clean. I don't think anybody's going to have an issue with that.
Right.
But I think if it's a different one, we may have an issue, but it's safe to, I think, to take a look at it.
Makes sense. Makes sense. Gotcha. Good dialogue on this. We want to do it right for the town. And of course, I know the business wants us to do it right, too.
I will say that, you know, the application came in with this as part of their application. So, you know, instead of me sort of piecemealing pieces out, I'd rather just bring it to you guys and just let you make the decision.
There you go.
You know, I mean, even though it's in, yeah, whatever the word I'm looking for, it's there.
Gotcha.
If it's not, it doesn't go into the calculation, but it's still signage that you can approve.
Got it. So if I may recap, this application is indeed three signs. The sign, the major sign that we saw in the illustration on the facade of the building, AT&amp;T. The sign, which is double-sided, which will hang down from the ceiling of the covered walkway outside the business. And then third, the signage that will be the vinyl stick-on lettering of the business entrance door. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
All three?
That's correct.
And if, one more time, any discussion on those three signs? Then is there anyone in the public that wishes a comment on the application for those three signs? Seeing none, no public comment, then I will entertain a motion regarding this application for those three signs.
I will make the motion to approve the sign for AT&amp;T. Sorry, I don't have the correct language here.
Signs. More than what?
Signs, sorry. All three signs as proposed.
The motion is to approve all three AT&amp;T business signs. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second. Sorry, Bill. Sorry.
She jumped ahead of you. Commissioner Hadley will second that motion to approve all three AT&amp;T business signs. Any further discussion before a vote? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the three signs for the AT&amp;T business, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the AT&amp;T signs is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Happy Fourth, everybody.
Thank you.
So this brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, which is the introduction and discussion of the water resource element. And I believe it's a water resource element provided to us from Carroll County. And although the agenda says for a recommendation to the town council, if I may, John, should I rephrase that to provide comment back to Carroll County?
Yeah, Carroll County Planning Commission.
Gotcha. Okay. So just for clarity, then, this is a draft water resource element that's a part of the required every-three-year water resource element update from every county in the state of Maryland. And so that's what this is about. So this is a draft part of that water resource element that involves the town of Mount Airy statistics with regard to water capacity and wastewater treatment capacity specifically. And again, this is a draft for our first look. And our comments here will go back through, John, to, to the count, Carroll County, for them to make suitable changes at its further. Eventually, a final version, a final draft version of the water and sewer master plan with the water resource element will find its way.
Back to the town council.
To the town council.
It'll be introduced there and then they'll hold a public hearing.
Right.
After that.
Gotcha. So this is literally first chops on what they are intending to put in their.
And this, in this element, this section here that was a part of Mount Airy was given to Barney, the town engineer as well, for his review and acceptance. And both myself and Barney are in agreeance on how the, how the, how this is presented so far.
Gotcha. And, and you read my mind because I wanted the public to make sure that this has appropriately so been reviewed by both yourself and particularly the town engineer, Barney, in coming up with any edits or changes or suggestions for them to improve before it goes into final draft and then comes to the council for their approval and acceptance. And so, so I turn now to the commissioners. In your review of this document, do you have any questions, issues, amendments that either John or Barney could answer? So I, oh, go ahead.
Barney, I'd be very interested in hearing your thinking.
Bill, can you come closer to the mic?
I'd love to hear your assessment and your thoughts on what's being proposed. And some of us have actually gone on tours of here the wastewater treatment plant and and other facilities that you have jurisdiction over. And so would love to hear your, your assessment, given the context that you, you look at all this and what's being proposed.
Sure. Everything follows exactly, basically follows our numbers. We went over this with the county a year ago, one and two years ago, going through the WRE. And not a whole lot has changed. So these numbers are, are right on, right on.
Okay. Barney, real quick, and I'm referring to page three of.
I'm on the same page.
There you go. You're, you're anticipating this, I think. So page.
You had one comment, yes.
Yeah, so page three has the title Water Supply. And there are county municipalities listed there. Mount Airy is in the stoplight chart for yellow. And it says that we have a deficit or additional capacity needed of almost 300,000 gallons per day, specifically 299,052 gallons per day to meet the growth that they anticipate for the town.
Yes.
And over to the right, just next to that deficit number, they list the potential actions to increase that capacity or to meet that build-out demand, or in another way to say it, to mitigate that shortfall, to, to help improve upon that shortfall. And one of the items they list is wastewater treatment plant expansion. And so my question is, we're talking about water supply. And for the town of Mount Airy and our 11 wells, that's a groundwater supply, right?
Yes.
And there are components of our water supply system. And Barney, you can certainly elaborate on it, storage, distribution, the wells themselves, so forth. But I just can't see why the county would say, to improve or increase the amount of groundwater we need, we're going to expand the other end of the whole process. Could, could you say that's correct? Or is that something we ought to go back and say, why in the world would we improve the groundwater supply by making the sewer treatment plant bigger?
Right. And if you look under the wastewater, it says that we have adequate capacity.
Yeah, it does.
Another twenty, 10,000 gallons.
Plus 10,000.
So we have adequate capacity to meet our demands of the infill property, not, not any annexations, but infill property.
Right.
So if they were trying to compare that, we need the wastewater treatment plant to go with the supply water, you know, that, that doesn't even make sense.
Okay.
So the water, wastewater treatment plant expansion should come off this list, I would think.
Okay.
You know, for the water supply to meet demand, we, we need more supply water.
And, and they do it for other municipalities in that same chart. Have you noticed that?
Yes.
So there must be some rationale.
If, if you don't mind me.
Yeah, please.
There is a note under water supply that's written vertically. It says, ten, plus 10% reflects MDEs, plus 10 for drought demand as well as capacity available, with the largest well out of service, which increases the capacity needed. So if they took the largest well out of service, this is what our demands would be? Is that, is that correct? So if that, saying that largest well wasn't producing water, we would be in a deficit of minus 299,000 gallons?
No. So, so we already factor in that the, it's actually 12% that the town requires.
Right.
More than the state requires a 10% for drought demand. And taking a well out of service, we have, our largest well is down at station number one, and we have four wells. We're willing to run two. So we actually have redundancy down there. So we don't really lose capacity by taking one well out of service.
Okay. Just wonder why they put that footnote in there for some reason.
Yeah. So I think what we've just concluded is, either through John or yourself, back to the authors at the county level on this, I, I believe we all see a need to either explain that potential action wastewater treatment plant expansion bullet or remove it. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. All right, John, is that, is that fair? Okay. And at this point, as chair, I'm going to invite Mr. Swanson.
Yes, sir.
If you would like to join us. Mr. Swanson is the chair of the Water and Sewer Commission, has done that job for many years in service to the town. And, and if I may, just ask, have you had a chance to look this water resource element over?
I have, yes. I've worked with, I'm the rep.
It's on?
It's on, yeah.
I'm the representative also for the town to the WRCC, which is the group that puts this together. So I've been involved in that end of it. I will, I want to clarify one thing. You mentioned that this WRE covers water, wastewater. It also covers our MS4 permit for stormwater management.
Okay.
So you have to bear in mind that whatever recommendation you'd make would include all three.
Okay. And, and so if I may, I'm going to broaden the input on this. Mr. Swanson, do you see any necessary edits or clarity on, on this draft that needs to go back through John to the county? Or, or can you explain, for instance, the topic we just discussed, the entry of the wastewater treatment plant expansion?
Well, there, there are separate sections of that. There's, there's the water section, there's the wastewater treatment section. In wastewater treatment, that's where they did the calculation that comes up and says that our extra capacity, if you were to build out the whole town, is 10,000 gallons a day. Which, the recommendation that maybe expanding the plant, which, which is a physical barrier in doing that, but I believe that recommendation is based on the fact that you're cutting it so close in terms of your permit for that, that it would be wise to consider somehow how you're going to add additional wastewater capacity. Although I do say, because of the topography over there or the area, that that's a, would be a tough call.
And, and so that's a great topic. And I'm going to invite a little additional detail from Barney on that because we've talked recently about the expansion of the current wastewater treatment plant's capacity. Because I, like you, have read the latest county water and sewer master plan, which explicitly states that due to geography, it's very difficult for us, there's no real estate to add more capacity in the current location next to the south branch of the Patapsco, right? But Barney, do you want to elaborate on, there's other ways to increase that capacity in the current footprint?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so we did a wastewater treatment capacity study just a couple of years ago with RKNK. The conclusion came out that we can expand to either 1.5, sorry, 1.5 or 1.8. So either a 25% or a 50% increase in the capacity with the existing footprint, the same tanks, by changing the process.
Okay.
There is a new process, a newer process that we can, you know, change. There's a cost to it. And I think the least cost. cost to it. And I think the least cost was somewhere around 12, 14 million dollars to go to 1.5 million gallons, or something more than 15 million to go to 1.8 million gallons. So there is a way to increase capacity there.
Right.
Without needing extra geography, since we're kind of surrounded by wetlands and, and so forth.
So, so it's technology that's gonna give us that ability?
Correct.
Gotcha. And when we say within the current footprint, that even includes not needing more tanks in the final stage, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's fantastic. Okay. Um, again, I open to any commissioners that have any questions. And just in general, we got two of the experts here. Any questions at all about water or wastewater treatment? From my personal perspective, when we talk about meeting a shortfall in water supply, not wastewater, in water supply capacity, to me, it's simply two things. We drill more wells, or we get a higher allocation. Is that fair? Is that an accurate perspective on just the simple question of how do we get more water into this town? Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Um, so John, I, I don't think emotions needed for this. I think we've had a good discussion. We introduced this topic. I believe we have one either edit slash question with regard to that entry. Sorry, Councilmember Kelly, you got a question?
Two quick questions, if I may. Just to clarify, so from here, this doesn't go to the council. This goes back to the county and then later it'll go back through here to the council?
It doesn't come, come back through the planning commission. Basically, our recommendations or modifications will go back to Carroll County Planning Commission. That's presented to them. It's then sent out to, once they receive from all the different municipalities. It'll send it back to the state of Maryland or MDE for their 60-day review. When that comes back, they'll do modifications if necessary. That document will come back. It'll be introduced at the town council, and then it'll be, a public hearing will be set, and then they'll vote on that after that public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make, I just want to clarify that it's not going to the council from here.
No.
And then, general question, does this body have, as far as comments, revisions, is it only on the Mount Airy portion, or are there other, some of the overview?
I mean, if there's something else in the document, I guess you could...
You can make, you can make comments on anything, but...
Comments.
My review of it, the county portion, not the municipal portions, there are eight municipal portions, is, is a lot of boilerplate. It generally probably doesn't conflict with anything that, at least I know of, that the town is either doing or contemplating doing. So my suggestion is that unless it's significant, I would suggest that you really don't make a lot of comments about the, what I consider boilerplate.
One more quick question, and I can't resist, because you're on the WRCC. What's the viability of the Gillis Falls reservoir argument as a surface water source, surface water source for this town? Is that, is that off the map?
Actually, it has not come up in any of the years that I've been on that. And they do, with all the reservoirs and everything else is, is run through and discussed with the WRCC. It has never come up.
Okay. Because it is in the water and sewer master plan, the last one?
Yes.
It speaks to that being a potential source for this town, as it may grow and annex and get bigger. I always found that interesting, because I thought it was dead.
I thought it, I find it interesting, too.
Okay.
Ralph?
Yes.
If I may, um, I guess a question that I have is, has the county identified potential additional water sources or the feasibility of increased appropriations? Because if they haven't, stating that there's, there are potential solutions, when they're really infeasible, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I think if you go through the slides, there's, one of the recommendations in there is that we could, and this is a countywide initiative for discussion at this point, but partner with other municipalities or with the county to share water resources if necessary and if viable. And of course, that would require, as far as Mount Airy's concerned, piping. And we certainly are not close enough to any municipality or major water source in Carroll County. We are close to WSCC. We are close to the pipeline in Frederick. But those discussions and the determination would be solely on the part of the town of Mount Airy, not the county.
I have another question, and maybe Barney. We wouldn't be able to drill any more wells because essentially we're on, we're on the Patapsco aquifer, correct?
So the east side of town is on the south branch of the Patapsco.
Okay.
We did, I don't remember exactly what year, but we did drill well 11 within town. We drilled two other places in town. After we did the 28 out of Gillis Falls, and were not very successful. And we came up with a good well down at South Main Street. There's nothing to say that we couldn't drill more, because I think there's still land available, you know, above and beyond what, you know, what we have, what we're pulling water from currently. And then, like on well nine on the west side, where even though we didn't have enough land to support additional capacity, under the Brinkley bill, I forget what year that was, like 19, I mean, 20, 2007 or something like that, the, under the Brinkley bill allows us to bring in more capacity for a municipality utilizing some of the acreage that's outside the municipality.
I think you have to figure...
There, there are ways of bringing in more water. It could even be a well outside of the town limits that gets piped into the town. There are options. They are listed in the water sewer master plan. Gillis Falls reservoir is one of them. You know, unless we doing a lot of development, you know, it's just something that we're just keeping in there because it could be a viable solution 40 years from now. We, we don't know. But there's no reason to take it off the books if, if it could be a viable solution in the future. So that's, that's why it's there.
And those, those, drilling additional wells and stuff is, all has to go through the MDE review process and the permitting process from them. And so the, the question is, in, in their minds, and we don't know, how close are we tapped out in terms of what they're gonna give us in any additional allocation beyond what you can do through the Brinkley bill?
Right.
Right. And I, I think that, I guess just from where I'm sitting, this is a little bit, and, and it's what it needs to be, because it's boilerplate or whatever, but it's a little bit hand wavy about what we would do to increase capacity. And, you know, instead of like an actual study on the feasibility of it, and what, you know, even the options that are listed in the master plan, how viable are any of those options, really? I just think that at some point, someone should look at that, because this is just saying like, oh, we're yellow, we're, you know, we'll figure it out. But the reality is, it's a lot more complicated than that. And I don't think any of us have heard of a, an extremely viable solution in the near term.
Give an example on the Beck property, developer drilled a well that potentially could be a viable solution, until we actually get an appropriation, know what that amount is, and if it meets our, our minimum, that certainly could be. But until we need it, the town currently is not actively looking for water, because today we still have a little bit of capacity. But if a large development came in, they would need to provide that. So it's kind of on their dime to, to search for that water. But if for some reason we come into a deficit again, then, then, but that's, because we're getting close to using up our water supply, that's why we asked for additional appropriation on well, well number nine.
Okay.
You know, we're about two years into it, and we're still waiting for MDE to give us a response.
In addition, as I said, the Water and Sewer Commission has been looking into long-range planning for that type of thing, because currently the town does not have long-range plan, exactly what you're, you're saying. And we are in the process of discussing that, and most likely will be making a recommendation to the town council, that they direct the staff to make long-term plans on both the water wastewater treatment plant and stormwater management.
Commissioner Buz, you?
Barney, I'd like to reference the, gosh, upwards of two years, I think, you spent in, up in the Harrison-Lashere area, testing up there and so forth. And if, if you have any comments in terms of the context of, of, of what is up there, and the extent to which it would behoove us to, to pursue looking at that as a viable option going forward, or else that's, that's under the purview of Carroll County, and we don't have a Harrison-Lashere access yet.
So Harrison-Lashere, we tested twice, actually. And we came up with basically the equivalent of two of our existing wells. So increasing about 20% of our current capacity. So that's, again, certainly a viable solution. It's all matter what they want to do with the property, and whether that's gonna come into town, if they want to share that with, with the town.
Yeah.
That's...
So that could be an option.
It is, correct.
And if I can again recap, because it's a great question from Commissioner Wallace, and that is, what are our, what are our solutions? You know, we, we've identified a shortfall. We say we need to do this. But let's get a level below that. And I think what we just concluded, that in the inventory of possible solutions for increasing the groundwater supply, we have potentially five solutions. We have the drilled and tested Beck property well near Watkins Park. And then through an annexation, we potentially have four drilled wells on the Harrison-Lashere property. So in the, getting down to what Commissioner Wallace just encouraged us, I think we have in our quiver, five arrows that could potentially be the solution to this shortfall. Would that be an accurate statement, you think, Barney?
Yes, and we're already pursuing one of them, which...
With, with Beck?
After two years, we're, we're waiting for that response.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is that something you want to add to the report?
Oh, for Harrison-Lashere?
No, this is well nine.
Well nine. But that's an MDE allocation, right?
Yes, we're waiting for an increased appropriation.
Right. I'm, I'm, I got you. I'm, I'm kind of focused on holes in the ground. That, there's, there's five other holes in the ground that could be leveraged.
The sixth hole that we're trying to get the appropriation, we already have.
I got you.
The other ones aren't currently active with a pump house and et cetera to put it back in our system.
And I believe another option without a hole in the ground is actually connecting to Frederick County.
Which is a fee.
Is, is a large fee, and a lot of piping.
As, as Dick said, yeah. Okay.
And Barney, would that be grants that would help us pay for all of that?
I don't have an answer to that.
All right.
We wish.
Well, listen, unless there's a, another good comment, I, I want to thank everybody, including you, Mr. Swanson, for joining us tonight. Because quite obviously, it's an understatement to say this is an important topic now and for the future of the town. There's, there's not much higher priority than our water supply and the treatment of it. So again, I think we conclude that we send back that one small edit on the water supply chart, questioning the WWTP expansion as a viable solution to increasing water supply capacity. And again, they may explain it, and maybe with that explanation, a good entry. But Commissioner Wallace?
Can we get an update on what's going on with the PFAS situation? Yeah, like what's the status of remediating it?
We can give you an update, yes. So we broke it into two parts. We're working on the design. In fact, it's, it's about 99% complete. We've already submitted drawings to the county for, for their review for the site plan. And that's for stations one and five. We have two other stations, two and three, that require the design, which they've begun, but they still have a little ways to go. And also the connection to the trailer park. That's the second, those three things are the second phase. So we're just kind of at the beginning stages of getting those going. But one and five, we're, we're near complete design and trying to get, you know, approval. So, so that's under review currently through the agencies. In the meantime, we're continuing to monitor and, you know, do testing and stuff.
That was my next question.
But they are, they're never exactly the same. You could have this well is high, and this well's high, but then the others are fine, and, and those two would be fine, and the others are high. It seems a shift, you know, the way the groundwater's moving, I guess. But, but generally, you know, we have the same wells that keep repeating, you know, high levels, you know, if not every time, every other time.
Have we seen any levels higher than what were originally reported when all of this first came out?
No, or, no. 27, I think was, 27 or 28 was the highest level on well seven. And that's, I don't think anything succeeded that.
Thank you.
Before closing this topic, any interest from the public on the water resource element in its draft form? Seeing no interest in public.
Please come to the mic. Well, the, mic, mic.
So, just a quick question. Is, is there anything in this water resources summary or section or whatever that's, that's inconsistent in any way with what we state in our master plan? So for example, I'm, I'm looking at, so this is page one of, of a summary associated with the handouts. And it says, key action items for Mount Airy. And then under drinker water supply, one of them says, complete Brinkley bill evaluation for increased appropriation. I, I know we're doing that. Did we say that in the master plan?
So I don't recall an action item in chapter four of where water is addressed under natural resources, that we have an action item that is specific to the Brinkley Act.
Okay. Where I'm going with this is, I just want to make sure, I want to be able to understand the relationship between this document and our master plan. And does one have more sway over the other? And I'd want to make sure that whatever we're saying in here is totally consistent with what we're saying in the master plan. That's, that's kind of where I was going with that.
No, I, I understand that. And, and without saying, as you know, there's two different timeframes from when we completed the master plan, and now that we've gone forward with the drafting and completion of the water resource element at the county level, I, I would say this, Councilmember Demoter, and that is, when the final, when the final water resource element and county, Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan is finalized, then once we have that final document, it would be reasonable for us to take a look at the master plan, specifically chapter four, and just see if there's any disconnects with regard to the actions in the master plan versus the statements. That would be the best answer I could give you at this point, if that's any other opinion on kind of putting the two together.
Well, I, I do agree with looking at these action items and seeing if there's anything that we don't think is feasible. You know what I mean? Like if they're proposing that we, the town, do something that isn't feasible, we might want to talk to them about that before it ends up in the final.
Right, right.
Is that what you were getting at?
Yeah. So I, I would say, so let me, let me say it this way. And Councilmember Kelly, I'm kind of looking to you now, because you'll be the first eyes on the final version. And so speaking for myself, but certainly possibly other commissioners would be interested in your side-by-side comparison of the master plan for the town vis a vis whatever that final document is. And I always hate to make work for other people, but I'm kind of asking if that would be reasonable task for the council liaison to look at with the planning commission? be reasonable task for the council liaison to look at with the Planning Commission, to kind of do that first blush on what it is in that final document, and if there's anything crosswise with our action plan, or something we need to pick up as an action. I guess I'm being very general here, but I would kind of look, perhaps, is that reasonable for you to kind of do that first check on it?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was just, another angle that I was going for here was, I don't want the town to be exposed in any way where if our master plan says one thing, and this other document says something a little different in terms of a developer coming in and saying, "There's more capacity," or "less capacity," or whatever. The two need to jive. And absent, does one document hold sway over another in terms of our town? Like, does our master plan hold more weight than what the water section in this document holds sway over? What's the relationship between the two in terms of authorities, so to speak?
Understood. So I would say, and as we're talking about it here, and Mr. Swanson, forgive me, but I can't remember the new council liaison to the Water and Sewer Commission, is that, that's you? Okay, all right. So that's Councilmember DeMutter. So I think fair request then would be for both of you to lay eyes on that final document once it clears the WRCC and the county, and then comes before the council. I would certainly throw a shoulder into looking at that comparison between the master plan and that final document. And John, again, and Barney, again, I think if we find disconnects and there's something necessary that needs to go back to Westminster, that would be the opportunity for the council to say, "Here's some questions," and so forth, and we go from there. Is that a reasonable approach to making sure the two documents jive? I guess is kind of the topic here, right? Okay.
Also pointing out, it's already cleared, the WRCC, and the process here is then to go down to all eight municipalities and the county planning commission, and have them take a look at it and basically concur with the entire WRE with specific emphasis on the town of Mount Airy. But I would reiterate to say that any changes that are not, I would say, material or significant, considering that, you know, this is a rather large document, and I'm not sure that this is, because this is not the WRE, this is just a summary. I don't remember whether things like expanding the wastewater treatment plant was in the WRE as the entire document. Do you remember, Barney?
So we added some language about the study of the, that we had done for the capacity.
Then the wording here is actually, the summary is probably not accurate, because if you're talking in the WRE itself, which is the document that you're talking about, we're talking about, if it says that, that's an accurate statement. If it says, "Expansion of the plant, meaning make it the footprint bigger," then yes, I would say that's misleading.
Right.
So I think before you make your recommendation, do we have an electronic copy of that? Did everybody get a copy of that?
Sorry?
The WRE itself, has that all been distributed to all the planning commission members?
Yeah, it's in their document. You're talking about this report here?
No, I'm talking about the WRE, the actual WRE itself. Do you have that?
I don't think so.
I think this is the Mount Airy's portion of the WRE, is what-
I'm talking about the document, there's all those little numbers in there about the, that's the WRE.
We haven't seen the complete WRE.
About the Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Pardon?
Or are you talking about the Water and Sewer Master Plan, as are charts, what the numbers are?
Yeah, what is in there? Because that should jive with the WRE, which would be consistent with the master plan.
Right.
And so you have to go back to that document and start from there and say, "What does that say?" And if it says that you're basically through technologically changing the way the process works now, you can achieve more water throughput permitted, then that comment should be just changed to, for the county to make the change.
Yes, so Dick, I think what you're saying is, there's actually two things. We've already mentioned the one on the water supply, wastewater treatment plan expansion bullet being questionable. But I think the second comment back is, we want to make sure that on the wastewater treatment capacity portion of the summary, we give you guys the right words as to this study's findings. And the capacity increase is feasible through technology.
I'm simply saying that, yes, you're correct. I'm saying that the water, the wastewater comprehensive plan, that document should say that through, putting new processes through, in other words, advanced technology, we'll get, expand up to that 1,005 or 1,006.
We're in agreement, yeah.
Right. And so if that document says that, all I'm saying is that, and you agree with that as a commission, that your approval should be then that those documents, all three of them, actually, the comprehensive plan for water and sewer, and the summary of WRE, this, and the master plan, all jive. And what I think is out of kilter here is the summary itself, not, right?
Okay, yeah. We can give it one more look.
Yeah, give it one more look.
Because the summary only says, "Expand wastewater treatment."
Yeah.
Doesn't say how. Just says expanded.
So all you need to do is, actually, you could just change the wording.
Okay. So to really help Ms. Clinton, because she's capturing this in the minutes, I'm going to propose that we capture that we are providing the following back on this topic to Carroll County. Number one, we are questioning the entry with regard to the solution on increasing the water supply, which is the WWTP, the wastewater treatment plan expansion. Comment one. Comment two, we need to make sure on the wastewater treatment side, whether it's in the summary or in the actual WRE, we, and Barney will have to help us on this, that we provide the right wording regarding how we can expand it using technology and not limited to a geographical footprint. Is that fair? And the last item, I'll say, for the commissioners to get a head nod on this, and that we will encourage Barney and Mr. Swanson to work further on improving this draft vis-à-vis the town's water supply and so forth. In other words, kind of a statement where we look to them for making it as accurate as possible. Is that fair, those three kind of points made? Deb, if that's good for you? Any issue or question or addition to those three points?
No. I just wanted to say, on page eight of this, it does say that, at the conclusion of individual action items, do not represent a commitment to implement these action items. So to me, it sounds like-
Weak.
What we decide is good for, I mean, that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, is that it's not, it's not, we don't have to hold this, what we're, what the county says, part of our master plan.
Okay.
That's what I'm reading. I could be wrong.
Okay. Last call, any further items on this? And again, my sincere thanks to all those who contributed, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember DeMutter, of course, Mr. Swanson, Town Engineer, thank you for this. And so now, I'm going to close this agenda item, and I'm going to move to reports and other business. And the council liaison report from Councilmember Kelly, please.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay, so the council met on June 2nd. A few notable items from the mayor and council liaison reports. The mayor, at that time, had lifted the voluntary water restrictions, and we can see that that was almost fortune-telling at that time with all the water we've gotten. So I was scooped a bit on the PFAS update, but remediation plan is being executed. Additionally, the town, MDE is asking the town to expand water service to 200-inch mobile park. Site plan drawings have been submitted to the county, as Barney said, being reviewed, and we have asked for an expedited approval of that. Mayor also reports that several grants totaling $3.2 million are pending for the renovation of the Flatiron Building. Additionally, and also a $100,000 grant for the MAPD police station. Councilman Munder noted that the Streets and Roads Commission continues to discuss the impact that South Side Plaza will have on that section of South Main. Councilman Evans reported that the EDC will be publishing a business survey to the town's businesses, and that will be followed by a round table on September 9th. So, September 9th, that's on the calendar, and I thought some of you would find that interesting. Town Attorney reported that the town's decision to reject Pleasant's pre-concept plan for the Beck property was firmly upheld. And while there were several ordinances, ordinance votes on the agenda, most of them were budget amendments for projects that were not fulfilled in fiscal 2025, but there was ordinance 2025-3, which dealt with rezoning properties according to the master plan. That was up for adoption. It was amended, there was a version that was voted on that was amended, and three sections were stricken. There was the property at Waterville in 27, the northern South Main properties, and the South Main extended properties. Those were all stricken from the ordinance, and that was passed in the amended state. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any question for council liaison? Thank you so much. Zoning Administrator Report, you have it before you with the various building permits, use and occupancy permits from Mr. Breeden. Any questions? Any questions on that report to John? John, anything you want to emphasize in this, or?
Not on the zoning administrator report, but I did want to mention that we did meet with the South Side Plaza with the elevations. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that at all.
Just very quickly, to kind of bring the rest of the commissioners up to date, and if I may just lead into that, as was, as I mentioned, as so well captured by Ms. Clinton in our last meeting on May 19th, we solved that problem by agreeing to allow a subset of the commission, call it a task force, call it a committee, but a subset of the commission, which was Commissioner Wallace, Commissioner O'Malley, and myself, were going to review their revised elevations of the buildings comprising that development. The revisions were strongly encouraged to contain more masonry and/or brick, to be more consistent with the character of the town and to the surrounding business community in that area. And so that was our conclusion. We motioned on that. Commissioner Wallace and Commissioner O'Malley and myself were poised to see those revisions. Those revisions were delivered to John. John reviewed them and sent them out to us, and the three commissioners had a conference call where we scrubbed with a pretty good wire brush the revised elevations, and we sent our comments back to Mr. Breeden for him to then convey to the architect. And at that point, John, I'll let you pick up.
Yeah, so I have conveyed those concerns and alterations that you did for building AMB to the architect. I have not heard anything back from them. Once I do get the revised elevations, I'll be submitting to those, to you three people as well, to get your final blessing, and then I can pass along to them that they can start construction documents.
Gotcha. And again, I, kind of an oblique commendation to the rest of the commissioners, because in that motion that we agreed to, in this path that we chose, we're keeping the business development moving forward, but we're having it move forward within the guidelines that we're stressing for architectural aesthetics and appearance. So I think we came up with a good way, and I commend both commissioners on this committee for their really good scrub of what came back, because there were some issues, I won't detail those, but just be fair to say, we created a fairly good list of things that had to occur to those revisions further before it would meet our comfort zone, our standard for the comments that we made on May 19th. So, thanks, John, for bringing that up, and that's a good way to apprise the other commissioners where we are. So, ball's in their court. Hopefully, they send us something back. And one last comment on that. The question was, how do we ratify and make sure that whatever we finally agree to is captured as the official final architectural elevations? John and I have both agreed that the final architectural elevations will have to be done totally in a whole new development site plan package, so that we don't have any like, "Oh, I thought you said this, I only understood this building, you know where I'm getting at." So, once we get through their next set of revisions, that will be the end game, that we capture it in that final set of required architectural documents. I've even added that I want the architect to sign those, I want to sign those, and I think, John, you're going to sign those. So, again, my emphasis here is on making sure there's no doubt as to what we agree to as far as what those two buildings are going to look like up at the future traffic circle. So, we're on it. Okay. The next Planning Commission meeting is on 28 July, at the end of July, same time, same place. It is now 9:50, excuse me, 8:56, and the Planning Commission meeting for the town of Mount Airy is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much.